...their time to be here. I'm a fifth generation Stark County resident presently raising my family here. Over the last 37 years, I have lived and been in business in Stark County as a farm and ranch owner and producer. My past, present, and future are here in Stark County. I feel it is necessary to be involved and to contribute. I believe the concerns that I are shared by the citizens of Stark County. I would also like to continue to be a voice for the people of Stark County. My goal is to improve upon the successes that our city and county leaders have provided and as well as to maintain the services that are needed. Balancing the needs and the wants in Stark County is probably the most challenging issue that we have. Roads, healthcare, human services, law enforcement, emergency services, and economic development. However, I will continue to prioritize how we spend taxpayer dollars. I am actively involved and currently hold positions on a number of boards on a local and state level. I am with the state level, North Dakota Grain Growers Association presently, also a present committee member with the North Dakota Outdoor Heritage Fund, and I'm a board member with the Richland Farmers Union Oil Company. I've also held past positions on a number of boards, Southwest Grain Board, past board member, committee member with the Rough Rider Boy Scouts Committee, as well as the North Dakota State FSA Committee. As a Stark County Commissioner, my job has and always will be to focus on the things that matter to the people of Stark County. Creating more good paying jobs, keeping our county safe. And at the present time, I hold the law enforcement portfolio, and I know what it takes to hire qualified personnel, and we have a quality law enforcement staff at this time. Also, lowering property taxes or at the very least stabilizing property taxes. And I, with another Commissioner, have the budget portfolio, and we have been very conservative in our approach to budgeting in Stark County. Also promoting sensible growth. And for the last seven and a half years, I've been a member of the Dickinson City Planning and Zoning Board as well as Stark County Planning and Zoning Board. It's important to understand that the private sector drives the growth in any community, however. The counties and the cities provide the public services, infrastructure, and all -- what we really do is we assist in that growth. That's our job. Good growth in the economy will provide jobs that may allow our children opportunities to stay here, and let's keep our children here. By committing to these core values, Stark County will be an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Since Mr. Frank started with the opening statements, Mr. Franchuck, the first question will go to you. I want to thank the -- those of you who submitted questions, whether you're in the audience or out in the public. And our first question this evening is, what are your top three funding priorities?
For the top three funding priorities, probably be the public safety part of it would be first of all on it. And also, we had to deal with roads and the conditions of roads. In the past, I've been involved with the truck regulatory program and there to maintaining and, you know, keeping our roads in good condition, and that would be very important. And then, you know, just the rest of it would be trying to keep people staying in this county, wanting to live in this county. If you can be willing to stay here and then maybe even have some people come back to this area to bring them forward back into what I'd be interested in.
Okay. Thank you. By the way, candidates, if you would like me to repeat the question when it's your turn, just simply ask, and I'll certainly do that. Mr. Tuohy?
The three major components that I'd like to identify would be safety, whether it's traffic, drug enforcement, alcohol, drug, or mental health. Roads, we all like to drive on good roads, and that'd be an issue that we need to keep on top of, make sure the equipment and the personnel are adequate for the road department. And also, the recruitment of employees. We've got good employees. I was with Stark County for 12 years. We've had good employees while I was on with Stark County Sheriff's Office. We currently have good employees currently, and we need to keep that up and keep the recruitment going and possibly even have a kind of roster going to where, if there are people that do quit, so we've got people to replace them. So roads, public safety, and personnel.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
Well, roads would be number one. That's for our infrastructure and safety, and we also need to take care of our law enforcement center, which is badly needed here in Dickinson. And we could use a mental health unit here in town, but that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Elkin?
First and foremost, roads. That would be the most critical part of our infrastructure in Stark County. However, I believe that emergency services and qualified law enforcement. Law enforcement is very important as well. Thirdly would be the courthouse expansion. I believe that's needed at this time and a doable project.
Okay. Mr. Frank?
I think I'll have to agree with everybody else up here at the table is roads is obviously very critical. You know, that's one thing. As soon as I mentioned to anybody I was running for county commissioner, they're always like, "You're gonna fix my road?" You know, that's kind of always the catchphrase, but I think another thing is, you know, public safety is another key concern. I think we -- you really want to, you know, really focus on that. And I think the other thing is, you gotta look at, you know, as far as you're talking about funding, you really gotta look at property taxes and really look at, are we really taxing at the right rates? And I think that's, whether it's too high or too low, you know, I think that's a key thing to focus on. Thank you.
Mr. Frank, that was a nice introduction to my next question, and we'll start with Mr. Tuohy. You'll answer first. And the question is, can this county meet its current obligations without raising property taxes?
I think we can. We have to look at the budgets, keep the budgets under control. Like I said in the last question, we do have good personnel. We've got personnel that care about counties. We've got commissioners that care about county, and if I'm elected, my concern would be for the county and residents of Stark County. And keeping taxes as they are, and I mean, we all know taxes are high all over, but if you want to provide a service to the citizens of Stark County, you have to pay your taxes, and you have to have money to be paying for them services. Same thing with the question just on roads?
No, the question was, can the county meet its current obligations without raising property taxes?
And same thing with law enforcement and keeping personnel, adequate personnel. We all, like I said in the last question, that we all like to drive on good roads. We want to have a good quality of life, and we like to be safe in our communities. And I think with the current budget and with the downturn with the economy, with all companies, I think we have to kind of watch how we spend our money. Thank you.
Mr. Coons?
Yes, I think we can operate without raising property taxes. Probably have to do a little belt tightening, but I don't see a reason why we should have to raise property taxes.
Mr. Elkin?
In the county, we're in great shape. Overall, we assume no debt, and I want to -- I have to applaud the other Commissioners as well because we assume no debt. We prioritized, and the departmental heads as well, but we did prioritize how we spent money. If we did not have the funds available, we didn't do the project. That's as simple as that. We're in great shape moving forward.
Mr. Frank?
I think based on the information I have, it looks like I agree with Jay that the county is in good condition and, you know, to -- you've really got to think about with the current economic downturn, not only with the energy prices, the price of oil, but also the commodity prices for farmers. You know, that's going to impact everybody. So when you think about raising taxes, nobody wants that. So and I've -- and based, you know, the experience I've had over the last 25 years is really balancing budgets and doing, creating my own budgets when running your own business. And, you know, to Jay's point, we don't spend the money we don't have, and I think that's the key focus, is make sure you have the money before you spend it, and you can't always bet on what's going to happen tomorrow because nobody knows what's going to happen tomorrow. Thanks.
Mr. Franchuck?
Yes, and I also agree with what they all said about taxes. Hopefully, that doesn't have to be increased. I know there's probably going to be some cuts in state funding that's going to come our way. That's going to be difficult to handle, to work with that too, but hopefully, like you said, we can work with it and try to get to work with it, to raise the taxes, and probably look at some things where it needs really to be spent, but we don't want to trade the taxes if we can.
I think everybody anticipated the next question, and this will be a two-minute question. We'll start with Mr. Coons. Do you think the county should revisit the wind tower decision?
You think it? No.
Don't need any more time?
No, don't need any more time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coons. Mr. Elkin?
You know, really, the short and sweet of it at this time, no. The fact of the matter is, if we start revisiting every issue that we've had to move forward with, there wouldn't be a business that would move into Stark County. It's as simple as that. If we start second guessing ourselves, it's not a good thing. So the answer is no.
Mr. Frank?
I think at this point, you know, to the best of my knowledge, the decision has been made on that particular proposal. I think it's in the hands of the Public Service Commission is my understanding. I think you have to wait and see what the Public Service Commission says. I think that's probably the best road forward, and like Jay had said, you don't want to go back and rehash every decision you've ever made over the last 10 years. So I think leave it in the Public Service Commission's hands as long as you, when the decision was originally made, you took all the input of all the people that were directly affected and made the decision based on that, it should be the right decision.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
I think I have to agree with Mr. Frank. The Public Service Commission, and I was at that meeting here, it lasted a little over 15 hours, and they have to come up with a decision. Could have had been done probably a little better, probably, as far as having meeting rooms available for everybody to come in and voice their concerns. Also, I've done some research. We have to go with alternative energy, but I think it's something that we're going to have to look at and in the future, make sure we don't run the same issues that we have with the wind farm. And I believe from my understanding, there's been a tool instilled in reference to this wind farm, and I think we need, the county needs to resolve that one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, Mr. Franchuck. I went out of order there. You should have been answering before Mr. Tuohy, so.
That's okay. Well, I'm done with mine. You know, as far as that wind farm, I know that a lot of the decisions have already been made on that, but, you know, the, I guess, what I had mentioned before, that I'd be voting for the majority of the people that, you know, that would, for the county, whether what they want for the majority of it. And right now, I've had the majority of the people that have approached me are against it. So I, you know, I asked some real questions of that, you know, what went on there. I wasn't fully involved in all of the meetings and that went on, but, you know, I guess what I've seen, you know, I would have to vote for the majority of things. Like I said, the majority of the people have been against it that I've talked to since I've, you know, jumped into the race. Can it be?
Thank you very much. The next question will be from Mr. Elkin, and that question is, we live in a commodity-based economy in Dickinson and Stark County, predominantly egg and oil. What can you do on the commission to ensure businesses can pick up quickly when prices rise?
Well, first of all, we need to provide good roads. The county's major focus is really providing good roads. And commodities, as well as oil, those commodities move down our road system. And I applaud Al Heiser and our road superintendent. He has made it his mission to get these roads in the best shape possible, and I believe that by the end of this year, our roads in the county are going to be in better shape than what they have been in a very long time. Another thing would be to be reasonable and consistent in our regulations to accommodate new business growth. We have to be transparent, and our regulations have to be consistent. And as well as keeping taxes low. Keeping taxes low in the county may attract new business. I believe that that's what we need at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Elkin. Mr. Frank?
I think the first thing you want to do is you want to keep taxes low, and, you know, people always look at where they want to do business. You know, if you want to do business in Stark County, you do want to do business just right north in Dunn County. The taxes are lower there versus Stark. And also, one way to get businesses up and running quickly is to make sure that your planning and zoning, you get things approved quickly. Don't put things through five, six, seven different iterations. Get it done quickly, get it done right, and that'll help spur continued business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franchuck?
I agree with what they've said before, that you don't want to put any stopping blocks in there to help these people get going first and, you know, meet with them, discuss what their needs are, you know, to get going and get rolling in with, and hopefully bring some of these companies back that are already left on us. I just believe that you just try, like you said, with the zoning and things like that, to not put any stop blocks in there to, you know, try to get it through as quick as you can and really help them along and move into it quicker.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
I think as far as the zoning, have fair and adequate zoning for the companies that are moving in, and also for having the good roads and try and keep our money in our hometown. I mean, you've got commodities that are being harvested out there by farmers, and I realize with the good roads and interstate transportation, it's probably get paid a little more money probably someplace else, but, I mean, we are dealing with Stark County, and if the money is spent here and commodities sold here, you can build up your infrastructure and keep going that way.
Mr. Coons?
Can you repeat that?
Certainly. We live in a commodity-based economy dominated by egg and oil. What can you do on the commission to ensure business can pick up quickly when prices rise?
Well, number one, you have to have good roads. You can get all your commodities to market, and you need a whole [beep]. Is that me?
We're good. And that didn't mean they didn't like your answer.
Okay, let's see where we're at now.
You said good roads.
Oh, yeah. We're going to need good roads, and which we already do here in Stark County. I think we've got some of the better roads there around all the other counties, and we need to keep our taxes low enough so businesses want to come to Dickinson and build up and spend money here, and that's about it.
Okay. The next question goes to Mr. Frank. What are some areas in the county budget that cuts may have to be made?
I think the biggest thing you need to do when you're talking about any kind of cuts is you got to look at the whole entire budget. You can't just really single out any line items until you get into the actual detail of what's happening in each individual department and try to understand where they can, those departments can potentially be leaned down. There's always room for cuts. I, like I said, I worked in a large company for 15 years, and every year, we had to make budget cuts in our individual departments. You know, you would talk to different department heads and different departments, and they're like, "Oh, we can't make cuts. We can't make cuts." But somehow, we always found a way to make the cuts, and we always found a way to make the budget. And I think you can do the same thing here in Stark County by looking at the overall budget and not just immediately ruling out any single line item and look at every single line item, because I think there's probably potential there in every line. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franchuck?
I believe, you know, we ought to make sure that public safety has what it needs on funding for ambulance services, law enforcement. That would not, if you look at anything like that. I think our Commissioners in the past have been pretty lean with us, because I've went for them for some money on things, and I think they've been pretty, did a good job in the past. I don't either, would believe they're going to need a big cut for any audit events because I think we're functioning at a pretty good pace right now, and I think the budgets are there. I mean, if there is a need for cuts, we'd have to look at some of the third, but I, like I said, public safety, I would not be of interest in cutting that part because I think we really need these remote areas and everything, and keeping the roads safe and the conditions of that also are very important on it. But if the budgets need to be cut, we'd have to look at each department on it and make sure that they're, you know, they have what they need to function off.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
I think it's very essential to keep emergency services going. We've got qualified department heads, whether it's road department, auditor's office, law enforcement, or any other department. Get them involved, and if there needs to be any cuts done, get them involved with the commission and Commissioners and their portfolio, and work that in. I think as far as the department heads, they do a good job with putting their budgets together, and I don't think there's anybody that really puts any extra fluff in their budget that I'm aware of. So I think as far as any cutting that has to be done, if it would have to come to an emergency situation, I think it's something that the department heads could get together along with the Commissioners and deal with it at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
I really think there's room for budget cuts in some areas, but you'd have to take a good look so you don't interfere with the services. And you've got to have law enforcement, you've got to have ambulance, so you can't be cutting there. You need roads, but I'm sure there's places there where you could find a place to cut.
Mr. Elkin?
As you're well aware of, Commissioner Wolf and I hold the budget portfolio, and our departmental heads are very qualified. They understand the downturn in this economy. For the most part, we've been very conservative as a commission. The departmental heads have been very conservative as well, and they know that in a downturn or downturn in the economy, they are going to have to make cuts. We're going to allow them to find those cuts where they can cut in each department, and those departmental heads will find those cuts before the full commission goes over the budget, and at that point in time, then we'll make additional cuts if we have to.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Franchuck, and it's a follow-up to the last question. Some of you began to answer it, and the question is, should any part of the county budget be shielded from cuts? And if so, which area?
I think I already answered that in the first part. I looked at the public safety, I looked at the ambulance services in these small-town communities. They need the help there, and we don't want to cut that. Law enforcement is important, and then also, you know, protecting our roads, like I said before. I just thought we don't want to, that all goes into hand-in-hand with, you know, keeping people in the county. If you just want that, well, if they want to stay here and live here and, you know, raise their families here, we want to keep them there. That's what the central part said. I would not cut, want, interested in cutting if we didn't have to.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
I think I kind of addressed that too in the last question. I don't think you really want to start doing any cutting in emergency services and also with your roads. And if you've got good roads, you've got good emergency services, you've got good businesses in the area, you're going to have people moving in. So I think as far as any cuts, it would have to really be looked at by department heads. If there's a situation that has to be taken care of, do it that way, but probably roads and emergency services, ambulance, fire, law enforcement, you've got to have that out there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coons?
It's pretty really hard to cut in the budget because there's certain services that you need, and you got to pay for them. So I really couldn't, wouldn't know where you'd start saving in the budget on. Police Department, Sheriff's Department, ambulance, social service, you all need them services, so.
Mr. Elkin?
I guess at the present time, I think I somewhat answered that question with the last question, but the departmental heads, like I said, we're getting into the budgeting process at this point in time, and all of the departmental heads understand the need for cuts, including the Sheriff's Department. If they can find those cuts, those cuts will be made. There are services out there that I really have a difficult time making the cuts, and really at this time, it's probably more in the law enforcement side, primarily because of the drug situation that's taken place and the mental health issues that have taken place in Stark County. But even there, our sheriff has assured me that he doesn't feel that his budget's going to be any more than what it was a year ago.
Mr. Frank?
I think you really need to look at every single department. I don't think you automatically shield any department from being reviewed or looked at. So, you know, you might come to a determination after you've reviewed the departments in detail with the department heads that there is indeed no room for cuts, but you shouldn't, in my opinion, you shouldn't immediately draw the line through one department and say, "Oh, we can't touch that because it's emergency services" or what have you. There's always administrative functions in some of these departments, and, you know, sometimes that's room. And really, if you look at the overall budget, you can probably reallocate funds from one area to another, and you don't have to make as many cuts as you think, and you don't have to impact as many departments. So that would be my recommendation, to look at every single department in detail and then make an educated decision on how you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy, this next question is for you. Do you think the county has the right presence in Bismarck during the legislative session? And please explain your answer.
If I answer it, I'll be explaining it at the same time, right?
Certainly. I hope so.
As far as, when I was involved with the county, I think as far as representation, we've got local legislators and senators that do an excellent job in Bismarck in trying to get money for western North Dakota and southwest North Dakota. I know with the influx of the last few years with all activity, and there was quite a bit of money that was allocated, your surge funding for roads, grants for law enforcement, and I think the representation from our local legislators through county government, through city government, has been doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to pause a moment and make sure that, I believe the intent of this question is about the lobbying efforts that the county currently provides in Bismarck, not with regard to the elected officials that are in Bismarck. So I want to clarify that, and Mr. Tuohy, give you another opportunity to answer the question from that perspective. Does the county have the appropriate lobbying presence in Bismarck, or should it be changed in some way?
Well, as far as the lobbying efforts, I know there's Commissioners that do go to Bismarck and do the different testifying on different areas that affect Stark County. And once again, like I said before, I think with the help of elected officials, you have to have a unity and work together to try and get funding and services back to southwest North Dakota.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
Well, I think our lobbying could be a little better than what it is right now. We send one person down, and I think if you probably go with a group, three, four people, they probably pay more attention to you.
Okay. Mr. Elkin?
At the present time, all the Commissioners want to be involved in lobbying on behalf of Stark County. Not everyone can make it to Bismarck, however, to testify. I have testified a number of times, Sean. Surge funding was the last one I testified on, and I don't have a problem testifying. Bucky Wolf has testified, I believe, Mr. Zander. We've all been in Bismarck from time to time lobbying the other representatives down there to hopefully help the county. That's why surge funding was so successful. The city did the same thing.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
I think the way you have to do it is you have to prioritize what you're really lobbying for, because if you're always showing up lobbying... for, because if you're always showing up lobbying, you're always going to have your hand out. So really, probably should really think about it ahead of time, really think about what does the county desperately need, and prioritize those items, and those most important items, really make a concerted effort to go down and lobby for those funds for those items. I think that's probably the best way to handle it.
Thanks. Mr. Franchak?
I think with the less money that's going to be available in the coming years on it, I think it's going to be more important to have lobbying going on in here, and have , you know, as many of it can get down there, and the more, the better would be, and with the less money available first, I think it's going to have to be increased from what it's been.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coons, this question is for you. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Well, for number one, infrastructure, we need, we're running short of room at the courthouse. Need it built. This courthouse was built in 1935, and we just outgrew it already. So we need to add on and make room for help. It's a big chore we're taking on, but we're going to have to do something about it. We're working on it right now.
Mr. Elkin?
Could you repeat that question, please?
Certainly. The question is, what do you see as the most pressing need for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
It would be the courthouse. I agree with Mr. Coons. We've outgrown the courthouse, and at this time, and we were, we've had the ability for quite some time, we've known we've had to do something with that courthouse. And for quite some time, we as commissioners were setting aside monies devoted to our capital improvement fund to meet this need. And the monies are there, and the time is right.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
As, to the best of my knowledge, the biggest project going on probably right now is the courthouse. So I would say, go ahead and complete the courthouse, get that, get that done with, get the other capital projects done that are in the, in process, and then look at prioritizing the rest of the projects that are on the list. But the ones that are currently in progress, get those completed as quickly as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Franchak?
I agree with the rest of, said, the courthouse, that project's already been started, and it's been long overdue, where they need the room there for our court systems, and they're trying to keep up by new security there every day now at courthouse, and I see what kind of traffic comes through that door, and it's been needed for a while. And the law enforcement, or the center's next, that building is, you know, getting old, and it's been outdated, the police department moving out, that needs remodeling, and then, you know, there's some real problems with the interior of that building, they need to repair it on that. And also, I think we need to do something with mental health for treatment on that, and then social services, they're there, they're in their building, they're at there too, they're, you know, I know it's, part of the funding comes from state, but they're packed in there, they're, yes, and needs are being needed there also, and for the treatment of alcohol and drugs there too, that every day that I see the charges that come through the front door, it's, the high percentage of them is drug-related, or theft that's going on, or assault, that they're stealing their drug habits, I think, so.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
I guess I'd have to agree with the other candidates. The courthouse was started a year, a few years ago, even when I was with the county, I was involved in it from the beginning stages of it. The law enforcement building up north, where the police department moved out, and now the sheriff's office is moving into police department area, that has to, that's over a million dollars, it has to be stuck in that place to keep it going. Social services is another important area that needs to be dealt with because of drug involvement and mental health, because there's a lot of money being spent driving back and forth, and if we can get a building and get psychiatrists and mental health professionals down here, it would be an asset. And I guess with the courthouse, to have a good meeting room, so we can get more people involved in hearings and Stark County commission meetings to eliminate the pillar that we've got in the middle of the meeting room right now.
Thank you. Mr. Elkin, this next question is for you. Are county land use regulations and permitting processes doing enough to assure the public interest, or are they too onerous?
Right now, I believe that they, you know, we're always amending our planning and zoning code. When certain situations arise where we can see that there's maybe something that just isn't quite right, and we've been somewhat following the city and their code too, as far as planning and zoning. I think we're, with the planning and zoning staff that we have on staff, people that we have on staff, I think we're doing a remarkable job, I really do, in planning and zoning. And it's about being consistent and transparent in planning and zoning regulations, and we are quite transparent.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
I think the best way to do this is, I don't know all the intricate details of the planning and zoning regulations throughout the county, so, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I think, I think the good thing to do is to go out there and look at what the other counties are doing, and kind of benchmark it, and say, here's what the other counties are doing, here's how our regulations compare to them, to those regulations, and if there's an immediate need, address the immediate need, and then look at the overall planning and zoning rules, and if they're meeting the obligations, and there isn't really the complaints, and businesses are moving forward, and no one's really feeling, I shouldn't say no one, very few people are feeling infringed upon, that their rights are being trampled. If that's not indeed the case, then you might be able to keep the zoning regulations the way they are. Thanks.
Mr. Franchak?
I'm not real familiar with the zoning, but I have been to several meetings and seen some of the, you know, the action that's been done in zoning. I think they're doing, the county's done a real good job in that, they look at different situations and that, but I think the only thing I could see is probably something increases, probably meeting a little more with the cities involved, especially if they're close to projects that are done, you know, just meet them, and, you know, go with it, that they're more familiar with what's going on with the zoning, get them, their influence in some of that too.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
The last time I had, excuse me, the last time I checked, we had over, I think, I believe, 140 subdivisions in the colony, and I think with zoning, and planning and zoning has been doing a fairly good job, but it needs to be to where it's fair for everybody. And I guess let's fill the subdivisions that we've got on now, fill them up instead of adding more subdivisions, because the more subdivisions you have, the more services you have to provide, it just stretches the emergency services, the road department, all the essential services that needs to be done to these areas. So I think it's got to be fair and adequate for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
I think the zoning board is doing a good job, when they zone a subdivision in, they make sure that everything is built to county standards, all your drainage is there, and I think we're doing a good job in the zoning, Stark County.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, your next question is for you. What can the county do to encourage more treatment options for addiction and mental health services?
Well, I think, I think the biggest thing you have to do is look at really where the need is, what types of, what type of addictions, what type of mental health issues are we having, are we experiencing? And then go to the experts and try to figure out what's the best path forward. If it's, if it's primarily substance abuse related to drugs, go to people that treat drug substance abuse on a, on an everyday basis, and ask for their recommendations, and use the experts' recommendations to move forward.
Okay. Mr. Franchak?
I think in that line, we need to get something more local for treatment on that. We've, as I mentioned before, the sheriff's department is on the road constantly, either going to Bismarck, Jamestown, Fargo, Minot, transporting people out, and bring them back for hearings, again, in a couple of days, and then I just feel that we need something more local in that, and there's just a big need for that. There's a very big shortage of counselors for that type of treatment also too, so we need to try to get something going more locally to help with that need, because there is a big need for it here, like I said earlier, and some of my other comments.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
I think something needs to be done. I know a few years ago, we had a board, a mental health board that was meeting on a monthly basis, and what we need to do is probably work with the area, southwest area, instead of, because they've got a lot of miles to travel. I mean, when Wilson has to take their people down to Bismarck, or Jamestown, or Fargo, Dickinson has to do the same thing, it puts a lot of strain on the departments. And there again, you're talking about the budget affecting the budget, trying to get the personnel, because nobody's got the personnel to do the transport, so you've got to call added personnel and pay overtime, or pay extra money to get people to these locations. And I think working with the professionals, the doctors, and hospitals, southwest area of North Dakota, to try and get a building built, or renovated, or get, and get professionals into the area to work on these problems, because we're going to, if the economy keeps up like it is, we're going to have more and more of this coming up.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
Yes, we do need a mental health unit here in town. I remember when they built the new hospital, we worked with the hospital and see if they could put one in there, but it didn't happen, because we spent a lot of money chasing back and forth, all on mental health units, Jamestown, Bismarck, Fargo, and I really do think that we should have one right here, Dickinson, because there's more alcohol, more drugs every day.
Thank you. Mr. Elkin?
At the present time, we're spending close to $5,000 a month in just mental health transports. That's just for the personnel that are making those transports. These transports, it's become quite critical that drug and mental health issues are, they're a real problem here. And we need, we're going to have to become creative in how, in our approach in trying to put some kind of a center together here, a rehab center. I believe it's going to have to be a multiple county, city approach. The legislators, and Senator Wardner, he is well aware of the problems that exist here with these issues, as he and his wife, Kayleen, put up two of them for us, because there was no room to transport those individuals. So they spent a weekend with the senator and his wife. So the senator's well aware of that. Our representatives are all well aware of that, and it's not only just a legislative fix. This fix is going to have to take place with some county funds, and hopefully it's a multiple county facility, and maybe some private investment from our local hospital.
Thank you. Mr. Franchak, this next question is for you, and again, I want to thank the public for submitting these questions, and you'll, you'll know why I say that when I ask the question. Should the county hire a county administrator similar to a city administrator? Why or why not?
I think probably there is a need for that, would you be, kind of oversee some of the things that are going on, it would help, you know, it would help with like the human resource part, area of it, and also too, and I think would oversee and help with some of the department heads with some issues that they have, that they, overall, and it would be someone that can oversee all the departments of that, that probably I think would be a need for that, would also help probably the commissioners themselves, and know what's going on, and keep them in, surprise some things that are going on in the departments of them, and also give the department, for someone to go to with some problems, instead of, you know, going to commissioners one-on-one, or going to all, they could deal with that. I think, you know, they could probably handle a human resource department too, that's probably needed in the county too.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
That's a couple of items that I had, that I was going to talk about later, is administrative person, and also HR person. I think there's a need for that, that way the commissioners wouldn't have the responsibility to take on their portfolio, so I mean, they'd still be in charge, but the administrator would be the overall person, just like the city, and the city is run. And that way, your chain of command would be going into effect, and I know you're talking probably quite a few extra dollars for both positions, but I think it's something that should be looked into and see what the cost would be, and pros and cons, and also, like with any HR person, HR director, trying to set up policies for Stark County to protect Stark County government and employee, and work together with that.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
Well, right at this time, I really wouldn't be in favor of hiring an administrator, because a little bit ago, we talked about budget cuts, and that would cost more money again, and I think our department heads, they're doing a good job of what they're doing, getting things organized, and the help with the commissioners, seems to me like it's working just fine.
Thank you. Mr. Elkin?
You know, there's a huge difference between city government and county government, as you well know. City government, of course, the city hires almost every departmental head. County government, for the most part, a lot of our departmental heads are elected. I believe that less government is better. By hiring another individual, we're going to have to pay for her or his staff as well. I think right now, in the times that we're going through, and since there is a huge difference in governments, city and county, I think we're just best well-served the way we are.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
I think the best, the first thing you have to do is, is think about, can the county afford it? That's really the first question. And then what would be the added benefit of having an administrator? And then, like Jay said, you'd probably have to have some staff along with the administrator, so now you're adding additional overhead. You're going to put a burden on the other departments to pay for it, because they're going to have to take the money out of there in order to subsidize this department that you'd be creating. And, you know, the real question is, is there money there for it, and does it make sense to do it? That's, that's the real question. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Tuohy, you were first. Would citizens get more effective services at a better rate if more functions of the county were accomplished by contracting with private providers?
I don't believe so, because I know we're, with the sheriff's office, there's been contracts with the surrounding towns and all that, and then you've got different governments, different commissions you've got to deal with, and different personalities, and I think this way, if it's run by the colony, they can provide the services that needs to be done, and be accountable and responsible for what happens within the colony. And of course, there's going to be times where, I mean, you take a look like, I'm sure the road department hires contracts with different companies, contractors as far as roads and all that, to try and keep up, like with the last rains, I know there were different companies that were asked to help out with the grading and the roads and all that, which has to be done sometimes.
Thank you. Mr. Coons?
Well, I really don't think contracting would be the answer, because county employees, with our own equipment, we can do better, we can do it when it needs to be done. When you contract, you've got to look for a contractor, is he going to be here tomorrow? Is he going to be here next week? You've got to wait for him. And we do hire contractors, like on the gravel and road right now, we got 10, 15 of them running, but all in all, just as contract, no, county can do a lot better job.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Elkin?
At the present time, we already contract for a number of services in a number of different areas, IT being one. Back during the oil boom, it was difficult for us to find and retain those types of people, and it was far easier for us, and far simpler, and far less expensive for us to contract with the private sector to do our IT. We also contract the permitting process with a, with a contractor to provide permits for us, building permits specifically. That's worked quite well. It sure beats growing government at a cost to the people, and we've found that the private sector in a lot of areas can do it cheaper than we can.
Thank you. Mr. Frank?
I think one area you can look at contracting potentially is seasonal-type jobs, or seasonal-type work, because that way you're not hiring a full-time employee, having to pay that employee for a whole year, when you really only need some temporary labor. I'm sure the county's doing some of that stuff already, as Jay mentioned, with IT support, you generally contract things like that. But any kind of seasonal work, it's an opportunity to do some contracting, and also, if you, if you kind of look at all, you look at the different departments, sometimes the private sector can do it cheaper, and, you know, that's, that's the experience that I've been in my whole life. I haven't had a public sector job in my entire career, so I've only worked in the private sector, and it seems like, on the surface, that most times the private sector is much more efficient than the public sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Franchuk.
I think the county right now is doing a lot of the subcontracting already, you know, things, there are different things that's needed on it. I think they're doing, the county commissioners are doing a good job right now. And, you know, if there's a need for it, they have done in the past. I just don't know if there's any need for anymore. I think our county employees that we have are very loyal employees. They're good employees. And a lot of them are stuck through the oil boom. They could have probably gotten some higher paid jobs if they stayed with the county. And they're good workers, hardworking people, loyal to the county. I think they do a good job. And like I said, the county in the past has contracted out things that they don't have the equipment or manpower to do, they do do it then. So I don't know if there's a whole need for a whole lot more.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coons. Next question is to you. Social services is a large portion of the county budget, and the needs seem to keep growing. Are there ways in which we can reduce costs related to the provision of these services without sacrificing quality or quantity?
Well, I don't see where we could reduce services, because a lot of that is state mandated. So we have to, we have to pick up our share, and the state picks up their share. So I don't see where we could cut anything down.
Okay. Mr. Elkin.
At the present time, Diane Mortensen is running that department. And her and her staff have done a remarkable job, even when they're understaffed, in getting the job done. It's a myth to think, or a local myth, to think that the county has a lot of say in those programs, when all of those programs are either state or federally mandated. And at the present time, I would, I'm going to hope that our state legislators, and I know that they're looking at funding social service programs at a higher rate, because they know that all of the counties, they're well aware that all of the counties are struggling somewhat with the bill at the end of the day. And they're looking at the mandated programs that they mandate on the state side, and trying to fully fund those programs.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I think there'd probably be an opportunity to look at some of the social services programs that aren't funded by the state or the federal government, that are funded solely by the county. And what, there could be potential there to do some cost sharing with some of the neighboring counties. Because they may be probably, as Jay had said, they probably have the same sort of issues, that are running short on the funding. But maybe if you do some sort of cost sharing, instead of having two facilities or two doctors doing the treatment, you could maybe have one counselor, one doctor, could share with Billings County, Hettinger County, Dunn County, and, you know, split some of that overhead cost, and you might be able to get some of your, some of your costs down that way. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Franchuk.
Can I repeat the question, please?
Certainly. The question is, social services is a large portion of the county budget, and the needs seem to keep growing. Are there ways in which we can reduce costs related to the provision of services without sacrificing quality or quantity?
I don't believe so. Right now, I think their function is as efficient as they can. Like I said, their need has increased drastically in the last few years. I don't know where you, where you can get that from. In all ways, hopefully the state comes through with more funding for that. Otherwise, the county's going to end up putting the bill, because it just, there's a need for it, and it's going to keep increasing. I don't know what would change that, because right now, there's just the abuse of that, the need for that is there. And I don't know where you'd cut it at.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tuie.
I think right now, Starr County Social Services does a very excellent job. I know I've worked with them in the past, when I was in law enforcement. You've got certain rules and regulations that you have to abide by, by state and federal guidelines. And then you've got your mandates. And the concerns I've got is your unfunded mandates, where they come down. And this is what you have to do, but you're going to end up paying for it. But I think, I'm not going to be sitting here trying to be an expert in social services. But they do an excellent job with it. And I think we need to work with other agencies to try and get the services that need to be expanded, or anything like your veteran services, if they deal with veterans and things like that, and senior citizens, and work that route. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Elkin, this question is to you. As the Bakken and Three Forks oil play matures, and Mr. Lynn Helms has said that this is, has called this a five-generation play, so it's around for a long time. Do you see opportunities or challenges that the county will face?
You know, at the present time, I believe that we're well situated. We have plenty of housing that's gone up. We have plenty of commercial space that's gone up, as well as industrial. We have, we have a lot of building space that's available at this time. So I see nothing but opportunity in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I'm actually in the oil business, so I see it, working it every day. And I see the immediate future being challenges. I'll be honest with you. We deal with the drilling rigs. And, you know, you've got about 12% of the drilling rigs that were in the state two years ago. So you're going to see a dramatic decline. As the Bakken and Three Forks mature, you'll probably have a shift from the drilling over to the production side. That will generate some, create some additional jobs. But in the immediate future, it's going to be challenged. And you're going to have to be prudent in your financial decision-making. And over the long term, as things continue to improve in the commodity market, you should see some sort of an upturn. But I wouldn't expect it to go crazy again like it did a few years ago. I think it'll be a gradual, you know, comeback. The oil companies need to get funding right now. They're struggling to get funding to do things. And they're not going to do, they're not going to get crazy until they have a stabilized oil market, where they can borrow money and move forward. So in the immediate future, I see a challenge. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Franchuk.
I totally agree that there's going to be the challenge there, you know. Even if the prices do go up, and then things start moving in, we're going to have to take a close look at it, and not jump into it, both feet in it, and then have some problems there if it drops again, or the bottom drops out again on it. So I do see there's some, could be some challenges, and you just don't want to jump in it. And I think in the past, they've done a pretty good job on that. I think we keep looking at the same token, with that same way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuie.
I think there's going to be both challenges and opportunities with this oil activity that's going on. We know what happened here, when it started here, what was it, four, five years ago? Everybody was saying, oh, it's going to last 15, 20 years. And people were saying, hey, why don't we slow down and let it last 20, 30, 40 years? But, you know, everybody wants that almighty dollar, and they try and get the production going, the drilling going, and all that stuff, and get the money right now. But I think, I can, I can see it as a challenge and an opportunity for this area and other areas. And it's just something that we should have probably learned from the last couple of oil booms that we had. It doesn't last forever, and it does slow down and picks up later on. But it's something we're going to have to really watch. And if there are challenges, we're going to have to deal with it. If there's opportunities, let's do it, you know, let's deal with it.
Thank you. Mr. Frank, this next question is for you. What is your experience with preparing and authorizing budgets?
Well, actually, I have about 20 years of experience with budgeting. As I said before, I've worked at a couple of different companies. One was a large corporation, and I had to do a budget every single year. And I did that for 15 years with that individual company. And we did budget and forecasting on a monthly basis. We had to understand what our financial statements showed every single month, where we were going to come in at the end of the month, because it was a publicly traded company. So everything had to roll up, because it all goes down to the shareholder, and it all goes back to the share price. So you had to have a real good understanding of what's going on in your particular department. And, you know, one of the, one of the roles I had there, I consolidated a credit and collections area from all around the country, from about 20 different sites into one location. And I managed a portfolio of $6 billion, and had 250 employees working for me at that time. So I'm pretty, pretty in tune with managing budgets. And I manage the budget on our, on our own company right now. So I know what expenses and what revenue comes in and out every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Franchuk.
As far as the experience in budgeting, I was in the oil field toward the after. I was with the State Patrol for over 28 years, and I was an operation manager for a service company. There was dealing with oil field and that. And I dealt directly with the budgeting and that. And it was during the downslide, there was an O9 at the downside. And my office there was the only one that was actually drawing a profit in our whole region on it. So I think I had to do a pretty good, do a pretty good job of, you know, budgeting there at that time. And also, when I was with the sheriff's, as chief deputy, I also dealt directly to with our budget to, the sheriff to at that time. So I have some good knowledge there too, as far as budgeting that goes on in our county here.
Thank you, Mr. Tuie.
As far as budgeting, you know, we all do a certain amount of budgeting to our lives, in our personal lives. You know, after we get married and have children, and you're doing your budget all the time. With the sheriff's office, when I was with them, I was involved with the budget process. With the police department, I was involved with some of the budgeting as far as your traffic, traffic safety, trying to get grants together. And it's not an easy task. It's something that you have to really take to heart and try and not to over expend your budget, but yet provide the service. So budgets are hard. And if elected, it's not that I'm going to be doing the budget myself. You're going to have four other commissioners involved in it, also for their input and department heads and that. So I think it's pretty much up to the department heads to come up with a budget, and then it goes through the commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
I really have no experience in budgeting, but my own budget, I have a tough time keeping that in place.
That's it. Mr. Elkin.
I've held the budget portfolio, along with Commissioner Wolf of the county, for seven and a half years. It's a far more complex document than your normal household, or even normal business budget. We're dealing with mills in each, each department. The mills could change from the mill needs, as well as the value of a mill. It's not as easy as it looks, but it took me, I don't know how many years, to finally understand the budget. And I don't know that I fully understand that budget. It's complex.
Thank you, Mr. Franchuk. This next question is for you. What policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage broader employment or diversification in the county?
I think, as far as the policies in the county, I think there's, could be some help there. And I think I talked about it earlier with having a human resource officer. Then I know the county tried to hire one, it was unsuccessful, they did doing that recently here. But I think we need some of that, and that would help. And that's part of the situation on that. I think that would help. And that as far as policies, there's not anything specific that I know right now that he's changed. There's some minor things that I see that could probably be changed, but nothing major that I could see offhand. And I, you know, when I got involved, if I did get elected, I'd, you know, be looking at that a little closer. But right now, I can't see right offhand other. And I see if they think there's a big need for a human resource officer in the county.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuie.
I think I have to agree with Mr. Franchuk, as far as the human resource director. And it's something Mr. Frank has stated earlier. It's something that needs to be looked at to see if the county can afford that. Because a human resource director is to help the county, the commissioners, and also somewhat of the employees. I know at one time here a few years ago, they had kind of a county HR person, and because of some personality differences and all that, that didn't last too long. Right now, I think the state's attorney is acting as a human resource officer. And I think as far as the state's attorney, they've got enough responsibility as far as the services they have to provide. And I think we have to really look at a human service director for policies to put together to protect the county and the employees.
Mr. Coons.
Well, I think right now, we've got a good human resources officer. She's doing a good job, and she's always changing one thing to another, keep up with the laws.
Mr. Elkin.
Can you repeat that question? What policy changes or investments are necessary to encourage broader employment and diversification in the county? I believe that first of all, we're all answering about an HR officer in the county. I don't know if that's exactly where you wanted this to go, but I think it's about having consistent and fair policy, keeping our taxes low. And in reference to having an HR director, we have one. She's doing a remarkable job.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I think the biggest thing that attracts businesses is low property taxes, and favorable property taxes. And I think that is one area that you can, you can look at. And do you maybe offer some sort of property tax incentives for having new businesses coming into the area, or something like that? That would be an investment, or and/or a policy change that could attract additional business, and keep, get a lot of these small businesses going. Because the small businesses, that's, that's what creates the jobs. As in our own business, that's, you know, if we wouldn't have our own business, we wouldn't have all the employees we have. And, you know, and everybody always feels they pay too much taxes, you know, whether you do or whether you don't. That's, that's the general impression. So more favorable tax treatment, especially to those new businesses, for a, for a kind of a grace period, to get them up, going off their feet. Because then they'll hire more employees, and you'll have a better, more positive county.
Thank you, Mr. Franchuk.
I think I already answered.
Oh, you started. I'm sorry.
You want me to repeat?
No, no, you did a great job. I apologize. The last question that I have this evening is for Mr. Tuie. What one part of the county government or services would receive more attention if you were elected?
I think you have to treat all the departments equally, because they're all essential units of county government. There's going to be issues that get brought up, and that has to be dealt with. And I think a lot of times, as commissioners, their responsibility is provided a service to the citizens of Starr County. And if we'd be looking at an administrator, that could be dealt with, without getting involved, and getting the commissioners involved. Also, as far as, can you answer the question?
Sure. What one part of the county government and/or services would receive more attention if you were elected?
And I think something that needs to probably, what I like to check into would be the videotaping of commission meetings, to where they could be put on community access channel, instead of just, right now, they're being audio taped, and that route. And I think if it would be videotaped, and then that way, the public, the information would be given to the public a lot faster, and get involved that way.
Thank you, Mr. Coons.
Can you repeat that, please?
Certainly. What one part of the county government or services would receive more attention if you were elected?
Well, I'd have to, I'd have to look at all, look at all the services, not just one. You've got the road department, you've got to look at that. You've got to look at the sheriff's department. But the portfolio I have right now, it's at buildings and grounds, and we'd have to look at, still look at that courthouse that needs to be built.
Thank you, Mr. Elkin.
We're fortunate that we're able to spread the departments around amongst the commissioners. That way, one commissioner, and I hold the budget portfolio, as well as the law enforcement portfolio, and we all hold the social service portfolio. So it gives us ample time to look at the departments that we're in charge of, and do the best job we can in working with those departments. The other commissioners hold portfolios as well, and I applaud them for doing so. None of us know everything about every department. It would be darn near next to impossible. We'd be a full-time commissioner if we want to go that route.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I think I would look at all the departments, but I'd probably put the greatest focus on, really where the rubber hits the road, is the budget. I mean, that's where I have the expertise and the background. And I think that would be where I would want to put most of my focus, so I can get an understanding of what's being spent, and where, and why. Because I think once you educate yourself on what's really going on, you can make a lot better, more educated decisions that will benefit the residents of Starr County. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tuie. Could we start with you?
You sure did. I can continue some more.
They did it again, huh? Okay. Well, we're going to go with closing statements. Everybody will have three minutes to summarize or provide closing comments. Mr. Elkin, you'll get two minutes. You went a little overtime on your You went a little overtime on your opening statement. But everybody else will get three. So, Mr. Kuntz, could you go first?
Well, I'd like to thank the chamber and Sean for putting this on. I'd like to thank the audience for showing up. And come June 14th, this command mold.
Thank you. Mr. Elkin.
I will continue working with the people of Stark County and the people of the cities of Stark County, especially those people in Richardson, Taylor, Gladstone, Southheart, Bellfield, and Dickinson. I've had a great working relationship with the people of these communities in helping provide the necessary services the people need, especially in relationship to law enforcement, emergency services, and roads. I've been in business as a farmer and rancher for 37 years, and I've been through tough times and understand that cost cuts may need to occur. And we will have to become more efficient in how we do business in Stark County, no doubt about it. How we spend taxpayer dollars has always been my number one priority as commissioner. I will fight any attempt to raise property taxes and will maintain the services that are needed by the citizens of Stark County. Thank you for your time this evening, and I would appreciate your vote for Stark County Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Elkin. Mr. Frank.
I would like to, first of all, thank everybody for coming out, and I thank the chamber for putting this on. You know, I've never, I've never ran for public office before, so this is all new to me. And I can, I can promise you one thing, that my number one goal, if I get elected county commissioner, will be put the residents of Stark County first. That's, I think, in order to be an effective leader and an effective public servant, you have to listen to the residents, and you have to listen to the people that vote, and you have to understand what their wants and needs are. And I think if you do that, I think you can do, I think you can do a really good job. And I think, I think if, if you know anybody that knows me, I think I'm, I'm well-liked, I'm respected, I'm honest. I don't, I don't think you'll hear that, anything different from anybody that knows me. And I would just like to say that, you know, I've got, I think I've got a great background and experience, you know, working, working for companies for 20 years, running our own company for the last five years. Both places I was successful. I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be successful as county commissioner and do the people of Stark County a good job. So when it comes to election time, just remember, vote for John Frank. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Franchuk.
I want to, first of all, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the Commercial Government Affairs Committee for putting this on, and also to you, Sean, for mediating this, and also all the people for coming out tonight to appreciate that. Also, I just wanted you to know that, first of all, I talked about before, that I think there's the importance, whether you get elected, that the partnership we make with the local county, the city commission in here, the state legislators, and the state officials on there would be very important. I'd be, you know, want to work with that in that area. I also feel I have the abilities and the resources I can help to make Stark County a place people want to stay, raise their family and work and retire, because I, what I plan to do is retire in this, in this county. I just want to make sure that we have a good quality of life here, and that's what I might strive for, be my goal. And I want to thank you for listening to me tonight, and also I hopefully vote for me in District 3, county commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy, I've asked you to answer two questions twice, so do you want to skip your closing statements, or would you like to continue?
Well, we'll put the second one on with the closing statement. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the audience for coming out to listen to what you might want to call politicians trying to get into office. And it's a lot different than watching the news media and some of the politics that are going over on there. But one thing, I'd like to thank the chamber, and again, Sean, for moderating this. And like I said earlier, I do understand the importance of government as well as the professional service to you and the community of Stark County. I spent 43 years in public service, and with the help of everybody's vote, I can continue to provide a service for Stark County. I do not believe in raising taxes. And looking at taxes, I think you've got to look at your tax statement that you get, where your biggest tax structure comes from, and it's not from your property tax and stuff like that. It's because of the school districts that are upping the taxes as far as education. One thing what I'd also like to look into is, is having meetings, probably commission meetings. I know it's probably hard to do in some cases, but I think it works very well to have evening meetings so we can have more participation from the public and have an area that can hold an audience that is interested in county government, even if we'd have to contract, we like the city of Dickinson with this building here, where all the equipment is set up for videotaping and all that. So, once again, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up, and I ask for your vote on the primary election and also in the general election. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I would also like to add my thanks to the chamber, the chamber staff for putting this on, to the Government Affairs Committee for their work in also putting this on, and for the candidates. Running for local political offices, I happen to work with elected officials on a regular basis, and it's, it's not always an easy job. And I so appreciate having people stepping up to the plate and putting themselves out there for positions such as these. And then lastly, I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight. This process doesn't work well unless you're involved. So please continue to ask these gentlemen questions as they move forward and we get closer to that date, so that your, your vote is meaningful and it is appropriate for your thoughts and your desires. I'd also like to mention that next week in this building at 5:30, we will also have the city commission forum for city commission candidates. And the week following, we'll also have the park district forum, and that'll be held up at the Players Club, so, or Players Restaurant, excuse me. Thank you all for coming this evening, and have a great evening.